So we're here, the first time we go down home meeting to discuss three main ideas. Okay? The three main ideas are: a three-year strategic plan, annual financial highlights, new building planning. And everybody is here because the Maranite was going on. I wanted to know what's going on first when I came. So I did my research, I had a team to work with to see where is the church now. And with the team, five people on the team, we worked together to see where the church today and where it will be in three years. I want to say thank you for the people who worked on this strategic team. Dr. Fady.
Thank you.
Jessica Shumon. And that Jake Goodness. And he's not here today, Gus. And myself. So, the first part would be about what we did so far with the team and what the team achieved so far. I'll give this talk to Lala. She will have taken us through the first part of this meeting and then from there, we'll continue with other parts. Lala?
One more piece of housekeeping. You need to turn your phones on to vibrate. You can vibrate your phones so we can have your attention. So first, are you guys excited?
Yeah!
Are you guys excited? It has been over an hour, home in at least two, maybe three decades. So I want a little bit of energy. Abu Nazeem, we're going to cover three topics. After each topic, we will pause for questions. So we have microphones and everyone will have an opportunity to ask a question. But, before we start talking about where we're going, we want to have a little bit of fun. Can anyone tell me what this is a picture of? Say something. Seeds, huh? Ammon seeds. Seeds, someone said seeds. They are. They are seeds of a cedar tree. And these seeds become nothing unless you plant them, you care for them, you give them soil that's going to nourish them. They need sunlight, they need water to be able to grow. They also need to develop strong roots. They take time to grow, hundreds and thousands of years. And they need to be resilient to all of the changes in the environment and the atmosphere, and then really reach their full potential. And our parish is like that seed. Thirty-seven years ago, the idea to start this parish was the seed that got planted. And all of us working together had been helping this seed grow and nourish and blossom. So while we came today to talk about where we're going, we really, really wanted to take a moment to first reflect on what our story has been. And this is the story of all of us together and the journey that we've been on for the last thirty-seven years. So I'm asking you to have undivided attention. Watch the screen above me while we watch our story. They're going to help us to continue the call. Because if we think about it, we're thirty-seven years old. Cedar tree wants to be a thousand years old. This church is meant to live until the end of time. We have so much more to grow. We're still a young baby tree. And in order for us to grow, we have to make sure that we are keeping in mind all of the changes that are around us. So when we bought this building, we had thirty-six families. We now have six hundred registered families. When we think about what the family dynamic was when there were only thirty-six families, coming from a very similar place, speaking a very similar language, and look at the diversity that we have in our parish today. Six hundred families that come from many different places, all bound by their faith in being Maranite. Many multiple generations, now that those that immigrated here are having their own children. Shift in the language that's predominant in the church, as well as a changing culture and society that is competing with our Maranite values and a rise in technology. So you couple all that data there and you come to a point where we need to actually reposition ourselves, make sure that we're deepening our roots to make sure we have a strong foundation to be able to stay connected and relevant to all of the generations in this parish and particularly the younger ones who are going to be the lifeline in the future of Roman Parish. So because of that, Abu Nazeem started a steering committee back in August. And he brought a small group of people together. And our objective was to write a three-year strategic plan. And the reason why that's important is because if I asked you guys right now, who are we? What are we trying to achieve? And how are we going to get there? How would every one of you have given me a different answer? Because we didn't really have a roadmap. And so we needed to create a roadmap so that we can rally everybody behind that vision. And it was a small group of people, five of us, but the big task was that it wasn't five of us writing our opinion. We had a really big job to do, which was getting all of your opinion and all of your voices. And you may not have realized it, but every time we talked to you or every time there was a men or ladies or youth group or MIA meeting and your opinion was being sought out, we were trying to get feedback. The survey was a big undertaking. We know you thought it was long. We knew it was long. We did that on purpose. Because we needed as much insight as possible to get your voice. And everything that we're going to show you today was based off of what you told us directly developing the three-year strategic plan. So what we did is we executed the survey. We took that feedback and we used that to develop some strategic documents for the church. We wrote a mission, a vision. We identified core values. We developed our organizational design. We pulled together our strategic priorities, which is basically the five focus areas that we're going to build goals around. And we wrote those goals against a three-year timeframe so that we can start having milestones and holding ourselves accountable. So I'm going to start with everybody's favorite, this survey. First of all, it was long, personally, because we needed to create a baseline. Because in two years or three years, or whatever duration, if we want to take maybe only five of those questions because we're trying to solve something, or take a different five of those questions because we're trying to solve something, we now have a baseline. And we can look at those results and go back to the results from this one and say, it could be improved. So we needed to gather a lot of information. Second, thank you all. Because I'm sure most of you, not all of you, took the survey. We had over two hundred people take the survey within only three weeks, which is really, really impressive. And two hundred people puts us at statistical relevance. And what that means is, what you learned, the trends and the themes that come out of that, you can have confidence that they're accurate because we had enough people giving us all of those feedback and all of those trends. The other piece that we were excited, so we did like this huge deep dive. It was like a fifty-page deck. If anyone wants to see it, we'll be happy to share it. But when we looked at the information, what we saw is that it wasn't one kind of population that answered the survey. So it wasn't just the millennials or the boomers or like a certain type of demographic. It was actually very broad, which meant that the themes are even more incredible. So when we looked at the splits, it was a fifty-fifty split in male/female for the first two weeks, and like the females won at sixty-fourty. But it's a pretty good ratio. Seventy-five percent of those who took the survey were between the ages of twenty-five and fifty-four, which is a wide range of life stage and experiences and like where they started life at. And when we looked at households with versus without kids or respondents with or without kids, it was a sixty-fourty split. So again, that speaks a lot to what the different needs and the different life stages of the people that were answering the survey. For me, the satisfaction rating is a breed. If I had to pick one question, this would be especially bad. I'll tell all of you guys. How satisfied are you with the church overall? It was a five-point scale. You were very satisfied, satisfied, neutral, dissatisfied, or very dissatisfied. Our score, when you looked at very satisfied and satisfied, was forty-seven percent satisfaction. Which is okay. If you flip that, fifty-three percent are dissatisfied or neutral. We were happy to see that it was only about fifteen percent very dissatisfied. So that's good. But thirty-nine percent of you guys told us that you're neutral. And neutral is not good. Because if you're neutral, you really don't care. You're disengaged. You may not be as engaged as you should be. You're not necessarily passionate. So we had a strategic plan. We actually put a goal in. We're going to move twelve points of neutrality into satisfaction within the next three years. And we have some ideas on how we can do that. The other thing, and I'm going to take you through all of the themes, but again, we filtered all the information in both the closed-ended and the open-ended questions to come up with three key themes. And we asked you guys focus areas. And you'll see the strategic plan represents both the themes and the focus areas that you guys told us about. And then the last point on this slide is, in the open-ended questions, a lot of you guys served up that you feel like there's a sense of change and a positive change. And oftentimes, when the leadership comes change, but it was a positive type of change that you were sensing and that there was some excitement for the future. All right. So the themes. The first one is going to shock you. The first theme that we heard about was facilities, which completely failed in the survey. The lowest grade you can get, it pretty much died. But it's not a surprise. If you think about it, yet this building is more than thirty-seven years old because we bought it already developed. When it was bought, it was bought for thirty-six families who are not yet having the four set of six hundred. So we're definitely outgrowing the space. So you definitely said you want a bigger space. The other one is you wanted better space. It's not, you know, like the bathrooms, the kitchen. All of that came up in the survey. That people are dissatisfied even just with the maintenance and the quality of the space. And we have the daycare for our purpose. It serves as income for us, but it limits our community life. Because we can't use this space when and how we want it. So those are all the types of things that we need to move forward, to solve for, to nurture a more inclusive community life together. The second area, while we pride ourselves on being an amazing community, and we are and we have been, one indication in the survey is that maybe we've become a little bit stagnant and maybe fallen a little bit behind. Because a big theme that came through, especially on the open-ended answers, was wanting to build a stronger sense of community inclusion. And one of the words that popped a lot was cliques. So, and that's something we all own, right? Because that's something we create, the culture of this parish. So we need to think about how it's great for us to all have our friends, but how we become more welcoming and inclusive, especially when we're working together with everyone. And that came through very lightly in the survey. And then the last one, which I was surprised about, but I think is amazing. People proactively talk a lot about wanting a deeper spiritual life. They want to understand their faith more. They want to have more frequency, whether it was in number of liturgies or prayer services, rosary, novinas, like whatever it might be, like a greater depth of understanding and connection with their faith. We asked you guys, when there was a list, what were the three areas of focus that you guys would suggest for us? The first one is children's religious education, which is great because it's about enrichment education. But I think it also indicates this idea that we want our young to understand our faith and to be connected to this parish in with the hope that they're also going to become lifelong worshippers. The second one was about social cause. That we want more opportunities to help those that are less fortunate and that are needing. And the third one was again, developing a sense of community and really being more one and working together more holistically. So we assessed all of this information and then we used it to write our strategic fundamentals. I'm going to start with the vision. And the vision is like the aspiration. On our best day, what do we want to be? What do we want to become? And our vision, as we said, based off of everything we heard, is that we want to be an active, growing, and welcoming community living the faith, values, and traditions of the Maranite Church of Antioch. And it embodies everything that we just learned through this survey. We want to be active. We want to be growing. We want to be welcoming and inclusive. And we want to be anchored in our faith. And we want to be anchored in the values that define who we are and in our Maranite church. Because that's our point of differentiation, right? Our Maranite faith is what differentiates us from any other Roman Catholic church or anybody else out there. So we want to hold on to those things. Our mission, which is how we're going to go and do these things, how we're going to go and achieve this vision, is we're going to preserve our Antiochian, our Mayan heritage and practice our Maranite Catholic faith as disciples of the Christ and the local community and beyond. So we're going to put into action all the behaviors that we want to embody. And we're going to do it not just in our church, in our own little bubble, but we want to make a greater impact on this world. And that could be in our local Jersey community. That could be in the United States. That could be Lebanon. That could be anywhere around the world. That we actually want to have a true tangible impact. So, what are our values? Which is basically, who are we? What are the characteristics that we're going to embody? So the first one is we said, the first thing that we value is our liturgical worship, first and foremost. The liturgy is what anchors us and keeps us connected and close to God in our faith. So that's very critical. The second is fellowship. That we are and will be and want to be a caring community towards each other and towards, again, the broader community. We want to be disciples, which means we're going to emulate Jesus in how we behave in our daily lives. We're going to take the values that we have and we're going to be proud of that. We're going to emulate it and we're going to use that to do the next thing, which is evangelization. Help others be inspired to come into the faith and to also follow the ways of Jesus. We're going to have stewardship or be stewards, which is using our time, our skills, our talents, and our resources, our treasures, for the betterment of our community and the betterment of the church. And the last one was communionship, which is this idea that we belong to something bigger than us. We are connected and have communionship to our eparchy, to our batra, to all the Maranites around the entire world. So I just did this very high level on the table at the end. We actually have write-ups about each one of these that describes them a little bit more and has scripture quote attached to it. So you're welcome to grab one at the end of the meeting. Okay. So from there, what we did is thought about to do all this. So if we want to achieve all these things, you want to make an impact on the world and you want to have better communionship and fellowship, you can't expect one council of like a small number of people to have like twenty million goals to get all this done. Because what's going to happen is they're going to prioritize the top three to five that they can actually achieve because of time and resources. And the rest of you, I don't prioritize. So the thought was that we would have individual areas and have dedicated people working on these areas. And if they, as a dedicated team, pin four, two to three goals a year, that would be significantly more than one group that's centralized can achieve. And so what was developed were five new groups. And they're called ministries. The first group is called the Liturgy and Mystery Ministry. And the objective of this group is everything related to the liturgy. So anything related to prepping for the liturgy, for novinas, for choir, for altar boys, decorations, retreats, things that are centered around that space, this group would be responsible for. The second one is Formation and Development. So this is all around education and enrichment. So of course, it's our Maranite Christian Formation group. But there are things that we probably should start that we haven't yet started, like adult and family enrichment programs. Right now, we have Arabic as a language, but there's an opportunity for us to expand that to English for people that are immigrating, as well as to Aramaic. So anything related to formation, development, enrichment, education, this group would be responsible for. The third one is Pastoral Outreach. This is the group that is really around, just like the name says, outreach to others. So outreach to new parishers, outreach to those who have stopped coming to understand why and maybe help address it, to recruit them back in. Outreach to people who are sick, who are elderly, who are homebound. Any way we can touch and outreach to somebody else, this group would help identify those opportunities and then action against it. The next one is Parish Life. And this group is responsible for creating a little bit more of community life, a little bit more of our inclusive environment, setting the tone and the culture. They'd be responsible for creating events. Things doesn't have to always be religious. It could be fun. It could be sports events. It could be trips, places. It's really around just building stronger bonds as a community together. And this group is responsible for our communication strategy. So we made progress this year. We started the faith in 2018. Started the Facebook page. The app is more active. But there's still so much more to be done. And that is another thing that came up a bit in the survey around people need more awareness, which might help drive even more engagement. And then the last one is Evangelization and Vocation. And this is really to help inspire a bunch of those who might have a calling or to try and recruit more people into our faith. So these are the five ministries. I know we're sharing a lot and we're going to pause for questions at the end. We just have a couple more slides. So with that, this is basically our org design, our org structure. And it's pretty straightforward. It starts with the batra, goes down to our bishop. It goes down to our parish. Our parish is guided by the mission and the values. That's basically like the core of who we are. And from there, we have our vision and our priorities and our strategy, which is this triangle, right? That's interconnected with all of the groups as well as the two councils that Abu Nazeem is going to tell you about. So we are going to have two councils, a Pastoral Council and a Finance Council. We have our base groups that have been in existence for years and years. And then we have the five new ministries with dedicated focus areas. So I'm going to come and talk you through a little bit of the governance.
Thank you. I hope you're not fired yet. So when I came, I was looking how things are being done in the parish. And I figured out there's only one parish council, around eleven or twelve people, and they do everything. And this is a big parish where many people would like to be involved. And when there is a new blood, there's always a better work. A change happens. So I was trying to think what's a better way to have a bigger number of people working, but at the same time, have a group of people who look at the leaders doing a job as they used to do. According to the canon law of the church, they tell us that we are supposed to have two councils, Pastoral Council and Finance Council. Pastoral Council is responsible for all the programs of the church. Everything. So if you see the five foundation ministries we're working on, all these problems of the church, social, religious, anything you think about, program, not fundraising, program, this is all under Pastoral Council. And then on the other side, we have the Finance Council. Their job is to take care of all fundraising, money-wise, how things are going, building, everything, the structure and outside, and how can support the church and support the programs. And that's why the idea I came up with, I don't want to do something called elections or council or anything else. So I did this. First, when I came, I tried to work on focusing on re-establishing the groups. So we tried to work with each group and tried to have guidelines. So we have the Men's Group now, Knights of San Francisco, and they have their own guidelines and they have a board. The Immaculate Conception, Solidity, that means the ladies group, they were great. We just continued to enforce the law and the guidelines of the group so they can go according to what their guidelines tell them to do. So they're connected with all the others in Lebanon and in the US, other places. And then we re-established the MYK and they have also their own guidelines. And then we were, MYK were already there working, but we had a new name with a kind of a little different guidelines. We called them Pioneers of Mary. And then we have the Knights of Mary, and they were called before SSPO. The Knights of Mary, we have a bigger range of age. The Knights of Mary, we have a bigger range of age, and they have their own guidelines, and they meet also once a month. So the five presidents of these five organizations are ex-offici, means they're already on the council. And every two years, we change the president. There's a new election going on. So every time the president changed, the new president will sit on the council. So we have five members from the organizations. Now for the Pioneers of Mary, because they're under 18, they're not supposed to be on the council, we have the advisors. So we have one of the advisors will sit on behalf of the Pioneers of Mary on the council. So these are the first five. And now we have five ministries. I'll be appointing the chairperson of each ministry. And then these five chairpersons for five ministries will sit on the council, there will be 10. And then we will have one representative from the Finance Council so they can see what's going on with the programs. And then the Finance Council approve the budgets, make sure things are working well. If there's any fundraising, they will communicate that with the organizations so we don't have overlap with the fundraising. At the same time, everything goes connected and smoothly. So we have 11 members on the Pastoral Council. For the Finance Council, there's five people. Three of them I appoint. They have to be expertise in their finance things going on. And then two will be the head of two subcommittees. One subcommittee is the fundraising team, and it will be the treasurer of each organization. Plus, two people I appoint. And then the chairperson will sit on the Finance Council. And then the last subcommittee will be the Building and Brings Committee. And then there will be five people from different trade expertise that focus on the church what they need. The chairperson will sit on the Finance Council. So this way, we went up from 12 people into 60 or 65 people, doing great job helping in all different ways. Plus, with all these organizations going on, everybody has a voice, and we try to give things better. So this is the way we're doing the work. Every two years, you'll see a change in the council because there'll be a new election, new people coming, okay? At the end of the day, who are already on the board and put up in the papers, like if somebody is a secretary in an organization, they are already in the Parish Life Ministry because it's all about communication, bringing people together. So everyone on the board has a position, already have their name in. And then they have other people. At the end of the day, when you finish, if you feel you want to be part of which ministry, you just sign up your name and then your email, phone number, and then we'll begin having a meeting, okay? We'll talk about it then. Thank you.
But I'm going to walk you through it. And we developed our three-year strategic plan. Very formal. I'm going to start with the areas that are colored first. And by the way, again, we also have those printed out. You can take them, you can read through them, and I'm not going to read through every single word. But to achieve our vision, which is that we are going to be an active, growing, and welcoming community living the faith, values, and traditions of our Maronite Church of Antioch, we needed our roadmap. In the colored areas, the colored pillars, those are basically the five areas of focus. The first one is faith formation and spiritual life. And you said, we want deeper spirituality, deeper faith, and more frequency. So the types of goals in there are around how do we strengthen our Christian faith, implementing monthly Bible studies, maintaining our pariturgical prayers throughout the year, assessing the impact of having a dedicated English liturgy. Also around evangelization, there's some goals in here. The second column is about communication and community. So again, how do we build that stronger parish life? How do we drive greater transparency in what we're saying and what we're doing? The types of goals that are in here are executing a town hall. Check, 2019 is done, we'll get to do it again. That's one of the things. But it's also around strengthening our communication strategy and making sure that we're in all of the right channels that are connecting with all the people. Not everybody's on Facebook. There might be other ways that we also have to communicate. Another big one here is doing a registration drive so that we can really refresh who is the list of parishers and make sure that we have a current list and also digitize it, leveraging technologies that were more automated in how we connect with each other. The third one, the red one, is facilities and infrastructure. And there's two different types of goals in here. The first one is about continuing to improve our existing facilities, which again, a lot of improvements have been made even this year, or 2018 within the parking lot and the schoolhouse getting painted. But continuing to find the things that we have to enhance until we build. And then the second one is our capital development program, which Abuna is going to take everyone through a little bit. So those three were directly, again, connected to the three themes and trends that came out of this survey. The other piece is that, of course, we're an organization that has to maintain financial health. So our fourth pillar is around financial development. And in this, we have goals such as increasing our festival income by 20%, identifying two new incremental, big ideas that are going to give us 100% incremental income. So how do we like think bigger, stretch further, and really like drive more accelerated financial growth that is only going to fuel us in solving some of the other things that we need to solve in the parish? And then the last one that we added was leading with purpose. We actually need to help all of us become strong leaders currently and then strong leaders for the future. So also a couple of different types of goals in here. But for example, anyone that does have an official leadership role needs to go through certain trainings. There's going to be some team building events to make sure that the leaders that are making decisions are working well together. Other types of goals that are in here are just more about us day to day. How do we start a mentorship program where we're helping each other out? So it's about developing the total self, not just spirituality. We have a lot of people with a lot of expertise, whether it's in being an entrepreneur and owning your own business, whether it's in finance or a certain function. How do we help someone who's interested or an up-and-coming young adult in the parish learn about that subject and get some exposure? And also, how do we help continue our heritage? We have a lot of talented people who cook special things, who know lots of traditions, and not all of us know them or know how to do those things. So if we're preparing for an event, how do you bring the rest of us who may not know or the younger generation to teach them so we can carry that on? So it's development, but it's also heritage. So those are the colored sections. But if we take one step up to the gray, those are really our big goals. The colored section is how we're going to reach these big goals. But the big goals are, the first one is expanding our faith-based initiatives by 50%. The second was that satisfaction score, our scorecard. We need to move out of neutral and into satisfaction. So our goal is to move by 12% by 2021. So it will be another survey with less questions coming in 2021. And then the third one is improving the functionality of our parish campus. We need to grow our net income, which is our profitability, by 15%. And we need to strengthen our community leadership and engagement together. So we created this roadmap. The ministries that, of course, the ministries and the councils are going to be, like, responsible, the key owners are being responsible for helping us achieve those goals. And we wanted to make sure it wasn't overwhelming, so this is not meant for you to read it. But what it shows you is that we mapped the goals out in a couple of different ways. We did it by year, we did it by ministry, just to make sure it's not crazy overwhelming and it's achievable. So each ministry has maybe two to three goals per year across the next three years. And we did that on a peristyle that it's manageable. But also, when you guys meet whoever's on these ministries, you're going to be inspired, you're going to have your own ideas, and you're going to add more goals for things that you saw that maybe we didn't yet see. And we want people to be empowered to do that. So that was the work of our little steering committee across four months. And we are excited to have the opportunity to share with you guys today. So what we're going to do is we're going to see if anyone has questions about this work, not yet building our finances, because Abuna is going to do that next. If you have questions, we have microphones.
Looks like we have three years to plan. What makes us to plan for the three years? What's the reason we have three years? Why not five, or why not one or two?
So I'll answer, Abuna, if you want to jump in. I think one, we felt was too short-term. Five felt a little bit more too long-term, okay? Like I talked in the business world, we build five-year plans and the years before five mean nothing. So three years was a good way to balance short-term and long-term. And of course, we're going to evaluate it every year to see how we're pacing towards those goals and if we need to readjust anything. And we can always continue to add on that third year. Every year, we'll be evaluated and we achieve a year. But that was why, so we can realistically balance short-term and long-term and hold ourselves accountable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Let's choose questions, guys.
Too many introductions.
Side question. I think you've built this together, by the way. I think having three-year plans. Could you, if you talk about what we could expect as a parish between now and the next three months in terms of changes and meetings?
Yeah, great question. And again, also, Abuna, if you're ready to jump in. But there's going to be, first of all, there's going to be a roadmap. So there's ministry sign-ups that are happening starting today. There's seven roles per ministry. Some of the roles are filled again from people who are already in other organizations. But over the next couple of weeks, we need to fill all the ministries. The ministries are going to start meeting, and there's going to be a team building event within the next quarter for everyone that's in a leadership role. There's also going to be an expectation that they're going to complete any trainings, like anyone that works with young kids or whatever, there's some managerial trainings that need to occur. So anyone that's coming into a new role needs to do that. Then those groups are also going to be meeting to assess the goals that they've been given because we're all working towards a single vision with singular goals that we need to achieve. And from there, they're going to determine what it's going to take to achieve those goals and if they want to add anything else. So it'll be a busy quarter. Any other questions?
Round you up.
No? All right.
Got one.
One more, you got to go.
So I'm sure you've got this, they got maybe on a different slide, but with the existing groups that are here already and the addition of what I've heard, 65, two kind of key contributors, how do we balance out all of those meetings with limited space and prioritize them as we go?
I think that's a great question. And honestly, I think we're going to have to run along the way. The ministries with regards to like structurally, only one person from each of those ministries would sit on the Pastoral Council, so that's still manageable when the council meets. But scheduling is always going to be a challenge. The only thing I would say, even like working on the steering committee, is Abuna is now using facilities that he almost pretended he never had. So there's a house that sits beyond his house that he's turned into a meeting space. So you have that and you have the classroom. So we could actually be running meetings concurrently on a weeknight that we've never, we never like enabled ourselves to do that in the past for whatever reason. So that, I think, will also alleviate the scheduling, but I think it's something we're going to have to work through and figure out. Any other questions? Whoa, now you get to see PMs. All right.
So you have money to save, and how much we need to raise more in the future? So every year, the end of the year, you'll expect that every year. And then I'll have the report ready, maybe in two weeks out. It talks about all our finances in 2018. How much we generated money? What was the revenue? What was the expense? And how much we still have money, net income, for 2018? Add it to the money the previous priest had in the bank, how much we have so far? And then our budget for next year. How much increase we're focusing on? And then remember, all this money we're trying to raise is for the project. We'll talk about it more. Ready to begin? Okay. So this is the balance sheet. You don't need to look at these numbers and not really care much. It's about the current asset. This is the important part. Current asset, that means how much cash we have now in the bank. We have 1.48 million, okay? 1.48 million. It was 1.35, and then we added whatever this year. Fixed asset means buildings. And this is what the insurers say. Your building costs this month money, so we have to put it down. And they say it's group $3.75 million, the cost of the schoolhouses and this. We asked around and appraised on how much if we need to sell all these, how much money we got back, not more than $2 million. Why? Because this zoning is not commercial. And the city will not allow any commercial to build here. So it's only houses, you know, church offices. So the maximum money, we can set everything around here, all the houses, is $2 million, okay? So the focus is, what's next? This is the profit and loss statement of 2018, of last year. How much we generated money and how much? So the income was $353,000 plus, and the expense was $221,000. Total net profit was $131,000. I didn't make this money, you did this money. Through the collections, assessments, through the fundraising you do for church, for your generous donation for the church. And I tried to be very efficient in using this money. So plus, still doing the programs for the youth, for the children, so we don't have to feel that we are cheap on our youth. And we generated $131,000 plus. This is the money added to the previous years, and this is how we came up with 1.48 million. $1,480,000 is the sum of the money of 30 millions. Of course, there was the mortgage, we paid it out from Monsieur Maroon, but then all the money added. Monsieur Maroon generated $1 million the last year he had. The 16, 17 years he spent here, he had $1 million in the bank. $350,000 with Father Tony. Plus, also, he had a new house to buy. And now this year, we have $131,000 added to it. This is, of course, will be a little money used toward the project, plus future things. This is 2019 budget. The focus is to grow into $338,000 income. So from $353,000 income of 2018, the focus takes you to go up to $388,100, a kind of plus 10% increase. This is realistic, we can do it. How we can do it? Different ways. We have the Knights of San Shiloh generating money because last year, they didn't do any activity. So all the new activities, they do this year fundraising. That's a new income. The collections, the focus is to have an increase of $15,000 increase in our collection. I did a comparison between 2018 and 2017 revenue collection. We had an increase of $22,000 in collection. $22,000 average of $2,000 a month. And we can still have an increase of $15,000 by having more people coming to church, by, you know, being generous. And there's all different ways we can work on to have an increase of the collection. And the sad part is, our church cannot count on collection alone to survive. We always need other stuff going on. While if you go to all other churches, the Roman Catholic churches around us, they only survive on their collection. For us, not just as all the eastern churches, because we are small number, we barely talk about 600 families, but we are a small number of families according to the Roman Catholic churches. And that's why collection alone is not enough. We have to do some fundraising. The festival is a big thing. The Hafiz we do, and this is how we generate more money. And plus, we have the daycare here. Generate $60,000 a year for us. Now we have to look into all this. How we can really be self-sufficient without the need of having a daycare or anything else? How will I reach that level? It takes time. We have some objectives to achieve. But as far as we have now, we'll try to increase by $35,000. So the total profit next year will be $169,550 versus this year was $131,000. So this increase of $38,000 will be, the $35,000 we have an increase, the $3,000 we have an efficient decrease in our expenses. We'll try to be We try to be as efficient as we can. Okay? Anything about this finance? Any questions before we move on to the topic? One of the questions we had in the survey was, do you use your envelope? Some say yes, no, I forgot, I don't like to use them. What's the purpose of the envelope? The difference between the church in the West and the church in Lebanon. The church in the West doesn't have any properties. Ma'andawahid. In Lebanon, they have all these properties, all these rentals going on, and they can survive from the collection alone, because there's a big number of families, their church. And then all these churches in the villages, when they don't have money, they reach out to all these people, to all these immigrants who are living in the US, Australia, France, and they send money, so they can survive, you know? We cannot do that. We cannot ask people in Lebanon to send us money. Right? So how can I survive on our own here? That's why we have to say, the families here commit, they come together and say, well, we need to have a church to take care of our spiritual life. So this is how the community begins, like the thirty-six, thirty-seven families began. They came together, said, we want a church to take care of our spiritual life and our children's faith. So they came together, tried to reach out to a priest, have the services for them. And then when they were strong enough, saying, well, we commit our time, our energy, you know, our money to this church to survive. Grew up from thirty-seven families, six hundred families, and can be more. But all this because of the commitment of the families of this parish, commitment, few did in this parish. So the money you pay for the church, you don't pay it for God. You pay for the church to stay, for the doors to stay open, to pay the bills, to pay the electricity, the sewer, to pay for the heat, to pay for the insurance, to pay the center of the priest to have the full time here. You pay for the programs for the kids. That's why we send these envelopes out, not because, wow, we need your money here, or God wants your money now, because you made a commitment, and this is your church, you're coming together and you want this church for the doors to stay open. The only way this church can really survive is by through your help. And that's why every little penny helps. That's why I say you send out the envelope so you know that there's a regular collection, but there are ten collections from the hiparchy. You have to send it out as a charity. That's why you hear about the second collection. So collect them, it doesn't stay in the church. We have sent it to the bishop, and then the bishop sends it to the USCAB. So these are ten collections a year. And then we try to have some fundraising to pay for the bishop appeal. It's around 6,000, 6,500 a year. So everybody has to pay, I don't know how many, maybe 60 dollars or 35 dollars to reach the amount if everybody contributed, but since we don't sometimes, especially with the bishop appeal, we have to do some fundraising. That's okay, we'll do it another way, that's perfect, but we have to keep in mind, I know we are all a generous community here, we're great, but we have to focus on, when you go to Lebanon, when you're not here, you miss a collection. I'm saying it here, I never say it in church. I'm saying it here for you. This is money that's supposed to be steady for the church to pay for all the income, everything going on, but then what happens? The budget goes down. That's why we need to find a way, how can, as families, contribute to the church, say, I can contribute this amount of money a month. This is my idea, how much I can contribute, no problem. You say 10 dollars, 20 dollars, 50 dollars, 100 dollars. It doesn't matter how much you contribute. What matters is you are consistent, there's a stability, and that's how we make our church. The doors stay open, we can do all the problems we need. That's for you to now understand why envelopes is for you. If anybody wants a tax deductible, how can I know unless you give me an envelope, you have your name on it? So the end of the year, I'll write a letter, and this is how much I contributed, I give it to you, and use it for your tax deductible. You cannot just tell me, oh, I paid 500 dollars. If I don't have anything in hand, I cannot just write any letter. I have to be very honest before God. I cannot just, you know, I say, this is how much I want. You're right, I cannot, I have to have something official in my hands. Okay? So any questions about this? Okay? Give her a microphone, please.
I just, when you were talking about that, I thought about what that is with digitizing, and I'm wondering if there's any plan with the envelopes and making it electronic, so if you forget your envelope at home, I do that a lot, that you can do it online.
Yes. So one of the questions was asking, are you open to have a digital, you know, online giving? And there's many, especially with the younger adults, who are open to this idea. So I'm going to form just a new finance council, and we'll set up all the different ideas we have. So you have a piece of mind. One of the ideas, if you have just, we call ACH, you just have a wire money straight from your bank to the church bank, and this is steady, you don't need to think about your envelope or anything else. There are all these different ideas, but I want to lead you to the finance council and see what's the best way to do it, and this is the future, yes? Managers are already doing that.
And what I was adding, it's actually a goal of the strategic plans, when Patrick and the nice two different charities across a variety of the different leagues are collecting on. Whether it's for party brothers or for collection or whatever, I mean, so is that something that can be integrated into the plan?
Okay? Other questions?
I'm going to just for Kieraski, are we allowed to reach out outside our community for funding?
Yes, of course.
Are you doing that?
Are we doing that? It depends, like if you're having a fundraising, like the festival, we're reaching out.
There's different ways to reach out. I can offer something more, but there is, I'm sure there's different ways to reach out to outside our community.
Oh, yes, yes, yeah. What I'm doing now, just focusing on what we have now, and then we'll be open to how the new ideas, what I reach to reach out. But remember, we're very, how do I say it? We have to focus a little on whom do we reach to, okay? Because it has to be affiliated with the Catholic Church. So this is really something really important to focus on. Yes? Anybody else? Any question? Yes, Joanna?
How are we planning?
Take your microphone, please, so everybody hears you.
How are we planning to have a steady income for church? Right now, we don't need to have the church. Are we planning to have something like the church? Because if we rely on half-day, we know there's up and down, not always we have.
Yes. So the focus is to be, that's why I thought about the collection, that would be the steady income. And if we didn't have any projects, if we didn't have anything going on and everything is good, 131,000, you take out the 60,000, you still have 71,000. So we're already surviving without the daycare, okay? But when we have a steady income from the collection, plus all the different ideas. Let me tell you something. While I was in Eastern, the family had a young child, you know, she has leukemia, she died, she was 11 years old. And then the family was, you know, poor and needy, but there's just a purpose, the people come together and give money. And I told them, we need to come up with money, because we need to bury the child, we need to give money for the people. Within two weeks, they generated 26,000. Why? Because there was a purpose. When we have a purpose, people are generous enough, everybody will contribute and give. But there's nothing going on. They say, why do we give? Okay? Now, everybody knows there is a purpose. I will talk about, there's a new project going on, this needs the money, the efforts, and then, I'm sure, if something goes on and I need 10,000 dollars right away, I just all of you say, we need to raise up 10,000 dollars. Nobody will say no. I'm sure, because everybody is generous enough and they know they wanna have the church come apart. Okay? Anybody else?
Huh?
Yes.
You kidding? You tell me.
Thank you, Una, for that beautiful example. So I appreciate that there was a specific purpose with this young girl, but today, there's a lot of purposes going on around us. So while I appreciate the sustainability and the need to have a steady income, what are our plans to support other purposes or other needs within our community, whether it's here in New Jersey or Lebanon or other countries or poor or unfortunate, as part of the plan here with the funding that's coming into the church?
Yes. So I know that this church was generous enough, and through the years, they have many fundraising for the churches in Lebanon, for Tel Aviv, for people in need, you know, yesterday I restored that, you know, one of the years that somebody needed to have a transplant or something, you know, kidney, and then they radio raised money and sent it to Lebanon for this family. So they're already doing great. What I'm saying is, we just continue to do the same work, we're not taking up anything. The focus will be now is, we need to have a church that everybody feels that they, you know, they like, you know, the appearance, we talk about the appearance. So people, when they wanna get married, they get married in this church, and then they come here, there's enough space to park. But we cannot stop helping around, charity, this is part of our Christian life, helping around. And we're lucky enough to have our deep friend in the Catholic services, and he represents Murnay Church here, and they work all over the world, just came from Africa, they're doing some social work and helping there. We have a plan to give, we don't wanna feel that we are living, you know, alone in a box and we don't know what's really going on out there. We have to be part of the community, have an influence around us. There's many ways, and this is what I leave it for the ministry, the pastoral outreach. There have to be a ways, how we wanna reach out to all these needs, purposes around us, but of course, we have to focus at least in three years, the priority is building our church. Did I answer your question? Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Thank you, Una. I have a question. I know a hot topic in recent years has been the assessment, and I know, I heard like a lot of why the assessment was established and what it's for, and I noticed it's gone up in the past years. Just wanted to hear just the vision for the assessment, why we have it now, and I guess why it was established for those who weren't really alive or young, and to understand why it was created, what the vision is going forward with that.
So the day I came in, this is the same question I asked, why do I have assessment? You know, there's a collection. So the question, the answer was, you know, they had some mortgages, things going on, the assessment helped. So let me tell you this, if we take out the assessment out of the collection, the collection see was 122,000, and the assessment was 60,000. So you take out, so our collection is only 62,000 without the assessment. Some people say, okay, this is the assessment, but they don't pay anything else during the year, so this is the focus. I'm not with or against the assessment, and I don't wanna just jump in and change anything yet until I have a finance council and see what's the different ways we can do. Maybe the assessment, I will have another name, a different way of contributing, but that's, I don't wanna just change it right now until I have the finance council, see what's the expertise say, the experts, and go from there. Okay? But I'm with you with that, so I'll change the name, something, but we still have the same income in. That's the important part. This is the goal. Any other questions? Okay. We'll move to the end of it, everybody's waiting for. You will read that, what we do so far. I'm sure every year, you hear about the building, next year, we begin building, all this stuff. Let me tell you how things work, why we build something. First, you bring an architect, you tell him, I want one, two, three, and they draw the work, and then you go, you know, back and forth until you agree on the drawings. And then the second part will be, first, from the outside, how it looks, and then the second part will be how the drawings from the inside, what are the needs. The third part will be doing the site plan, the outside, the building, how it looks from the outside, and if we have the limits, the size is enough for the needs, the parking lot, there's regulations from the city, that's how we do it. And then after that, they all load the zoning board, and they have to, the zoning board of the city has to agree with your plans. Sometimes they go back and forth to change, or they have more regulations to reach that part where they give you the approval. After they give you the approval, you have to go back, and with the architect, you have to work on the blueprint, how the room will look, where's the electricity going, every detail. So remember, it's a big complex, so they have to go, bunch of papers and drawings for every part in the building, very detailed. And then, there's a planning board of the city. And then, after the thing we agree on, things are perfect, you send it, you send it to four bits, and then whatever bit you have, you have to send everything to the bishop, and they have their own engineer, they have to review everything, and they have to agree on everything. And then when they agree on the drawings, they're thinking, perfect, and say, okay, you choose this bit, you come back, you tell the guy, you win, and then we give it the work, and then there's some permits to bring from the city, and after all this, you begin digging. The easiest part is building the church. The hard part is finishing the work. Father Tony worked on the design from the outside, and as you go, you see, that's perfect. Perfect start. That's where I started. There was some kind of sketch there, and the sketch they had never answered the needs of the parish. So what I did is, after back and forth with the architect, a group of people working together, we put the needs, these are the needs, we need to have classes for the kids, MC have Arabic classes, we need to have a youth recreation center, we need to have a place for meetings, we need to have a place for the five, the councils' meetings, and then we had to have a big hall, we had a kitchen, we had an office. He came up with a plan that we liked. Okay? And then we go forward. So, so he created, you can see outside, I worked with the architect on the drawings from the inside. So this is the drawing of the church. This is the size. If you see, the church now is here, stops here. Okay? And this is this way, and this is the limit. We added all this part, and we added now this part. You don't see my arrow? Okay. Yeah, please, so I can, they can see my arrow. Right? Here. Okay? Okay. Thank you. So you see these, the limits here? This is where the church now is, the limits. We added this part from the parking, we took from the parking, this is for the office and the kitchen, this part, and then down, we took this part down extra, it's 48 feet, according to the architect, we're supposed to have 25, so we have another 23 to use. So we added that for the church, and then we added from the parking lot. Okay? So this is all the contacts we have. We have this house, this house, this house. This one, I already met with the lady, Ritter, from the bank, and they promised at the end of the month, this month, they would talk to me before it goes to the market, and we hope and we pray that you can purchase this house at the end of this month. They're cleaning it out, I'm having a direct conversation with her, she's done on sale. And I took the advice of Tony, and he told me, let's hurt me, I'll return, and then this way, on both ways. And then this way, on both ways, she can really help us because she will get the money too, on both ways. And I agree, and she was so happy. So this is how it looks. This is how it looks from the inside. The entrance will be from the parking. There are doors here, they're not seen yet, sorry. So there's an entrance from here. See? Yes. This is the doors. These are the main doors. And here, there would be a big cabin, where the car can come and park. You can see the drawings, you see it from there. You enter in. Now, and here you enter, there's a small area. There's an elevator going to the basement. And here, there's the steps going to the basement. And here, there's a big, you know, a big jester, the bell. Okay? Now, here, you enter from here, from outside. This is the, we call the multipurpose room. It will be the crime room. This will be the wedding, where the bride goes in, prepares herself, you put the shades down. At the same time, it's a baptismal room. We have the pond there to post, have the baptism, go back, have the baby, and then enter into a process in the church. Okay? And on the other side, we have a small area, called vesting, where we should count anything. He can vest in the back. And here we have the confessions. And all the way, it's around 15 rows, and each row will be around 11 people. So it will be over 300. And then here now, we have the altar, two steps, sacristy, sacristy, and a small room. And this is the old one, sorry. There's a small room here, and that will be the, a small storage for the church. Now when you enter here, we go to, this will be, not storage, it will be an office. And there's a kitchen here. This is the big hall. Whatever we have now here, the kitchen, with all the rooms in the back, will be open all together, and this will show all, this big arch. That will be the whole of, it's 4,107 square foot. It will fit over 300 feet of people, round tables, over 400 people, long tables. Okay? And then the kitchen is from the parking lot, thank you. And that will be a small park in the corner, in the back, where we put the garbage clothes. We don't want to come and see the garbage can from us. So it's all closed up. Okay? And here, where we have this small area, we leave it open for the people who are having a happily here, and they want to smoke or having a hookah. Okay? So, and now when we enter, there's all these bathrooms, men, women's bathroom, and we have a big storage area to put all the tables, chairs, what we need. So that is the first level. And we're doing it a way, it will be all one level, where you can go from the church to the hall from here, or you can go from here to the hall, from church to the hall. So there's two ways to enter to the hall. This way, or in the back, this way. Okay? So I'm standing outside shaking hands. You don't want to shake hands with me, you can go other way. Okay? So this is how we're done. We did it a way of all one level, because I'm thinking of all our elders in the church going steps down, steps up. It would be all one level. Now, we have a basement. It'll be under the church. We already have elevator, steps, and here steps. Two steps, and then one elevator, they can go now. When you go in, there are these classrooms, six of them. And then this one will be the meeting for the councils, one big room. The one big room is 520 square foot, that's big enough for a meeting. And these are like 400 something, for small classrooms enough. On this side, this is something you can open up. You have a big room, 1,000 square foot, will be a meeting room, like this one, little, smaller, will be a meeting room for the MIO, MIA, you know, ladies, men, instead of civilian hall. And then here, this one, open it up, this is a recreation center for the youth. They will have some couches, maybe food, maybe art, you know, so they can enjoy themselves, or you're having a cup hour here, they'll be having fun inside down. So they don't say, I don't want to go, there's nothing to do. Now they go down, they enjoy themselves. Okay? And then of course, there's bedrooms down, there's a small storage room, and the mechanical, and everything. So, for these, any questions?
Remember, you said capacity is going to be about 300.
300 for the church. Why 300? Let me just answer this person. Why we're saying 300, might fit more? Because according to the city, the ratio is every three, one car. So we're supposed to come up with 100 cars. If I say it's more than 300, I have to bring out more spots in the outside. And we already, look what we're doing. We're already taking this house down. This house down. And then I have all this area to be a parking lot, fits 100 spots. That's what the civil engineer is working now on, will be, you know, working on after the approval of the bishop, a hundred spot. And the good thing about the hall, it already exists, so if you call the grandfather, they cannot tell us you have more than 300 or something. Because we want to limit ourselves with 100 spot. Plus, we have that part, you know, parking there. We already have a contract, they have another 70 spots. So 170 total will be perfect for us. So what's your question?
The question is, what is the capacity now?
Now it's 220.
Okay, so we'll be increasing.
Yeah.
Do you think that's efficient?
Let me tell you this. 220, you already have over 30 people up in the evening. I'm afraid. So that's why we have to, we have... So this church here, up this area, there will be a loft for the choir only. Only for the choir, up. Okay? Yeah, there will be a loft here, yes. So they enter, and there's a loft here. There's a way, you see, the stairs from here goes up to the loft. Okay?
That would have about how many people in the loft? How large is the loft?
We'll do it in a way that only the choir stay down.
Oh, 20 people?
I don't want more than that, because you're... Because we already have enough space now for everyone, and all the families with young, you know, with babies, they have their own private room.
We only have a problem with the holidays. People come from all over, and they stare around, and it's...
Yeah, no problem. So let me tell you for the holidays. We already, the biggest problem is the Good Friday.
Right.
And we're already doing two services. So we eliminated the problem. We're doing two services, three and seven. So the 700 people already split into 400, 400. So we'll be still...
How was this Christmas, was it all?
Yeah, it was perfect. There's many couples standing, but it was perfect. It's 220. So imagine we have 300. Okay? Yes?
Can you please touch on what's going on with the houses? Like once the church has been rebuilt and everything, what's going to happen with the schoolhouse and...
Yeah, that's what I said. This house here, the rectory now, and this house downward to school, will be demodded. And all this area, for this is the line, see, this is the line here? All this area will be the parking lot, adding 100 spots. Okay? Yes?
The storage for the sheds, all down in the basement? I'm sorry.
Just one second.
Una, when the project is going to start?
So according to the goals we're achieving, we're supposed to break ground in March 21. Why March 21? Because the contract of the daycare finishes in March 21. So in 2017, I hope we don't want to anymore. She can sue us, and we cannot begin a construction once they have kids here, because it's a big liability, she can sue us. So we're trying to, you know, be very efficient, stay out of troubles, and we begin 21. Now, according to Bishop, he said, if you give her some incentive, and she agrees to leave in October 20, okay? We're more happy to begin with the project early. But now, according to the papers, we are still in a phase, the third part, where the civil engineer is working on the site plan. So it takes eight months after the approval of the bishop, and now I have to go to the zoning board. So not before June 2019, at least, to get the approval from the zoning board, and then we have a bunch of other work papers to do. Yes?
Father, since we know that we are building the new church, how did we sign new contract with the daycare for four years last year?
So, I need to understand, and I ask the second question. The answer was, they tried to begin the work, the papers, the drawings, and they stopped in 2016, early 2017, because they didn't feel, okay, the people's energy of doing the job or helping in any way. And they don't want to just lose the money of the daycare, and there's nothing really going on. So they said, okay, it's better to try the daycare, you know? And instead, because maybe the process will not continue, people are not open to the idea yet. And I already heard many voices since I came, that why do we need a bigger church? We're good enough. Why we need a bigger church? Because this church from the outside, the structure, is not sound, it's not good. Last year, you had the window up, falling, thanks to not, we were not there because of a big storm, nobody knows. Because the structure is old enough, and we need to change the structure. It doesn't matter how big the church is or small, we need to change the structure. That's why we're building a new one. While building a new one, we need a little bigger and more stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, I still have two minutes, and I have to leave. But I have a church.
Can we, can the engineer figure out to start building the church or maintain the yegya?
And the problem is...
We have a contract, the yegya somewhere else.
The problem is, there's no somewhere else. This is the place where she's in. This hall during Monday to Friday, she have all these beds and everything here, so it's filled out. And she has no other place to go. And when there's a contract signed by the bishop, she can sue us if we ask her to leave or something like that. So we're trying to be able to keep it up here.
Are you still that, again, a lot of the halls, the church hall?
Only the church, this hall, just from the inside, yes.
And they increase it, 80 people in the church?
80.
How much is the increase?
So if I want to take out the loft, we're increasing 110.
110.
Okay? And this is a, usually a typical Merlight church, around 300, 320. If you go anywhere, this is a typical church, anywhere.
Okay. Does anyone feel like, should we increase it more?
Increase it more?
This beautiful projection that Tala prepared. He saw how the...
Let me tell you this.
Increase.
The maximum people I saw in church was 230 people. And then even though there's more people to show up, when we look into 600 families, according to 600 families, the average people is, if it's a very good, in our case, 40% showed up. So 40% of 600 families, it's around 240 families, multiplied by 3, that would be 720. 720 for the services you have in church, if 720 shows up. According to now, how many show up? 300 max. So we're looking at the increase to 600, the church will still be...
So the church will fit how many persons?
300, 320. The new one, 300, 320. And you have two services going on. And if we need to have a service, a new one, like the English mass or something, so one of the missus will study that. We have three masses. Yes?
Thank you, Una, for having arranged all of this. You clearly took a lot of time to design this. I would like to echo the sentiments about the number of people. Because we are, for a number of reasons. Number one, we're projecting an increase in the number of families that will be joining the church. Number two, you may be willing to do two masses on Good Friday, but a future priest may not. And so we could get into problems there. Number three, I have two toddler and another on the way, so I use that loft a lot, because my child does not like to sit and diffuse. And so I think the loft may be a good way to increase the number of people that we can see, in addition to have some place for kids to go, because they could be, I think, we all have seen the kids running down the aisle to the altar in the middle of mass. And so, I don't know where we are in terms of township approval, et cetera, but it may not be a bad idea to allow people to stay in the loft, and they increase the capacity, and they can allow someplace for children to be.
Right, right. So remember, we have a quiet room here for the kids. Already have a quiet room. And then the loft will fit people. It's a big loft. It will be longer than the one we have here now.
So for the choir?
Yeah, for the choir.
So people can sit there if needed?
Yes. But when, so when there's a need for people to sit there and really more crowded, this church will fit over 370. But what I'm saying is, we're not saying yet how much. We're saying 300 because of the parking lot. Because we only can come up to 100 spots. Okay? And then for Good Friday, it's everywhere. Everywhere, even though they do one service, everywhere, they don't fit, you know, people. They have a hall, and they have outside, that's everywhere. But we cannot have a big church for one event.
One question on that, but I know you have a good thought. Is there a projected project cost for this project? And how much do we need to have before we start the project? So we know how much we have to work on.
Good question. Thank you for reminding me. So, so according to the cost, we are building 12,000 square foot, the new 12,000 square foot, around. Okay? And then we're taking some of these out. And then according to the architect, we multiply by 170 dollars per square foot. And this is because of the outside. You know, with the site plan and everything, you might reach up to $200, including not just building here, including the furnishes, including the outside site plan, the parking, the demolishes. So you're looking into 2.4 million dollars, everything. 2.4 is not bad for all this project. And as you already saw, we already have 1.4. Already there.
Slash and cross, 2.4?
Everything, demolishing.
Design and...
Design paperwork, as we're paying the permits. And that's, remember, this is the highest number. We try to have highest, and you always have in mind 10%, so... Yes?
So, Una, it's going to take us two years to start building it. So when is the building going to be done? And in the meantime, where are we going to have our mass?
So it takes only one year to build everything. Because, let's say, the time consuming is for the paper, workman for the building. When you have the money, everything goes fast. Where will they stay? Shake your heart, and come back. This is one of the options. Yes?
So will the building affect the festival anyway?
So we try to, so... We try, we try to have the festival every year, and we try to work around it. Maybe that year, might not do it there, do it there, I don't know yet. We have to plan it, work it out. But the good thing is happening for us now, is that the churches and intermodal, they're open. They want us, they're, they want us to go having happy year, the hall. And I think one day, we can also use their parking lot, the 16 acres there, to do something there. They're open to this idea, they need the money. Especially now, Robert Wood, they stopped parking there. So all this money they used to have, now they don't have. So they want us to have some activities there. That might be one option.
I think that's a great idea, that then we can bus people from over there if they're possible, they can still make it.
Okay, there's no change in rights.
Okay, so, just to say, the zoning board, I hope I have it 2019. We'll go to the zoning board. This is the first step towards the city to approve by June. Capital Campaign Team, I have to create a team for the capital campaign to see how I want to generate the million dollar benefit. Because I don't want to reach a time where I use all the money in the bank, and then we have zero balance. So how will I continue having some activities to generate more money? Plus, a capital campaign, looking into different ways, without really hurting us. We don't want to ultimately target the parishioners. We want to try to go out, to target different people, to bring the money from... We want to try to go out, to target different people, to bring the money from the outside too. Okay? And then I hope by October 2019, we'll have a model, you know, for the new complex, how it looks from inside and everything, so people can see how things are going. And we already have Simon wanting to do that.
We're not ready yet.
Yes?
We have more important things right now.
Which target the parishioners for the church, which is, let's say, if we get $20, let's say, seven, let's say, 700 families in the church, so if we are able to get $20 from that family in a week, like four, let's say, down, down monthly, which will generate about half a million dollar a year, like here, this is almost million and a half. But if we target more businesses, more, I mean, there's plenty of Lebanese, let's say, more use in the church, tax deductible for them at the end. And even we could target the entire United States with businesses, anything that we could get, we could write letters, which will be, like few kind of letters, target, let's say, Christian, target the Lebanese Christian, target, I don't know, businesses that we need their help to build a church, and every letter will be come to these kind of people, not, not one letter to everyone. So we'll have to go. So I'll now have you write them down, and then we give it to the finance council, they look into all this. Okay, this is the way. I want you to focus on one thing, the festival. If we can work together to reach out to new businesses, this is all new money coming in. Okay? And this is our effort. We focus on increasing the festival income by reaching out to more sponsorships from the businesses, not from the parish, and plus in the parish, plus there's other different ideas, we generate another $40,000 just that way. Okay? Just the last question, I have to leave. Yes?
Have you thought about trading places with St. Peter's? Father, have you thought about trading places with St. Peter's?
So, trading places, I already asked the guy, and they're not open to the idea, but he said, down the road, five, seven years, if something happens, there are only 25 families, but they're not willing to sell, to change places or anything. That already came up in October, and with, and our bishop, Dr. Bishop, the same idea. Okay?